Welcome to the September 14th, 6:30 PM City Council Meeting. We do have a quorum, so I'll call this meeting to order. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? And the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, would you please read the rules to speak?
Yes, individuals wishing to speak on public and non-public hearing agenda items must complete a sign-up card and present it to the clerk prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on quasi-judicial public hearings must complete a sign-up card and sign the oath. Sign-up and oath cards are available on the table in the chamber. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting, and individuals may speak at either the first or second petitions, but not both. No sign-up card is required. Citizens shall not comment on any issue more than once during the meeting. All comments except petitions and requests must address the pending issues, and citizens will be given three minutes to speak on all items. Citizens wishing to speak on the consent agenda must submit a comment card identifying the items of interest. Speakers shall be given three minutes per item. However, citizens wishing to speak on more than three items shall be limited to speaking for a total of 10 minutes regardless of the number of items.
Thank you, City Clerk. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of August 10th and 24th, regular city council meetings, and the special meeting on August 11th?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member, Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Motion passes. City Manager?
Yes, sir. We have a good evening, Mayor and Council. We have no special recognition or presentations, and staff request to move Item 12B to right now.
Do we need to make a motion and vote on that? Can I have a motion to move 12B to now?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Motion passes. We'll move 12B.
This is 12B, the approval of the final plat and acceptance of covenants, easements, performance bonds for tranquility, previously in Tigua Bay Plan Development Phase One, and the city attorney will read the rules for quasi-judicial.
Anyone wishing to speak on this quasi-judicial item must first sign a public hearing agenda card and sign the oath contained thereon. These cards are located on the table at the entrance to the chamber. If you have photographs, sketches, or documents that you desire for the city council to consider, they must be submitted into evidence and will be retained by the city. Please submit such exhibits to the city clerk. City Clerk, of all persons wishing to speak before the city council signed an oath card swearing to tell the truth, the full truth, and nothing but the truth. Staff and applicant have all witnesses that intend to speak, signed an oath card swearing to tell the truth, the full truth, and nothing but the truth. If there is anyone present who has not signed an oath card that wishes to speak on this quasi-judicial item, please submit a card at this time. City Clerk, have all agenda items been properly advertised? In the event that a council member has received an ex parte communication, verbal or written, outside of this hearing, the council member shall disclose the identity of the person, group, or entity with whom the communication took place, and the subject matter of the communication, including all opinions or facts discussed. Any written communication must be disclosed and made a part of the record. Also, in the event that a member has conducted an investigation or site visit or received any expert opinions regarding the item, said visitor opinion shall be disclosed.
Go ahead, Member Stokel.
Yes, I was just going to disclose that I did meet with the applicant, but it did not influence my decision-making.
What was discussed?
The project. Nothing particularly, just the project.
And I received some communication from Dennis Hepburn, basically asking about the project and when it was going to get started. His impression was that the city was holding it up, and, but we were not at the final plat at that point. So it was more a discussion of what is holding it up.
I met with the applicants, and pretty similar. A lot more about what the project was than anything else, but it also spoke to the concern of perhaps delays with staff to getting to the plats. So, but no influence on me except to be here today. Member Robinson? What? Oh, you know, no, 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 but did you have any?
No, I went through it. I got a little bit of history on all that had been going on, and I know that far as my knowledge, ground hasn't been broken for any other infrastructure to be placed in, and I'm ready to move forward with this to let's make something happen.
There you go. City Attorney?
I mean, and I also met with the applicant, but it was probably two years ago, three years ago. That was a while back, and that was just to discuss their vision and what they wanted to do.
And that's it?
Tranquility Plan Development Phase One is a 99-single unit, single-family subdivision located west of the Indian River Lagoon and north of the Nassau Causeway, which is part of the larger Tranquility Mixed-Use Development Master Plan. On October 24th, 2019, City Council approved the development agreement 1-2015 and the master plan for Antigua Bay, now known as Tranquility. The sketch plat for Phase One was approved by the City Council on November 13th, 2018, with conditions as described on the attached information sheet. On July 27th, 2021, City Council approved the First Amendment to the Development Agreement. On July 23rd, 2019, City Council approved bonding of all improvements for Phase One required, a performance bond as a surety, with notes on the plat and additional documents to be provided to notify prospective property owners that the plat was approved without completion of infrastructure and that home construction cannot commence until the required infrastructure is in place. Staff has reviewed the final plat for consistency with the comprehensive plan, the land development regulations, and the development agreements. Staff's findings are part of your packet. Staff recommends approval. Staff has also reviewed the covenants, right-of-way use agreements, easement, and performance bonds, and also recommends acceptance. With that, Ms. Busaka will introduce.
Ms. Busaka.
The staff report shown on page 116 of your agenda states that the final plat is consistent with the preliminary plat as required by Section 34-171. Performance bonds have been received for the construction of all required improvements, including separate bonds for sidewalks along the private residential street and the nature walking trail to be developed in Parcel 11A. A concurrency evaluation is included in your agenda item on page 122, and it shows that the, I'm sorry, this concurrency evaluation is required by Section 30-411 of the code, and this is a conditional approval, and all next steps, such as agenda, I'm sorry, such as building permits, the final will be reviewed at the final plat, the final concurrency. The final plat has been reviewed by staff and found to be consistent with the requirements of Chapter 28 zoning, Chapter 29 special districts and overlays, Chapter 30 development standards, Chapter 33 Article 4 regional mixed-use district, Chapter 34 subdivisions, technical manual section 7 stormwater management, 9 transportation infrastructure, and the water resources technical specifications. In addition to that, the, there is a matrix showing the way that the final plat meets the requirement of both the development agreement and the First Amendment to the Development Agreement. It has been found to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. The MYLAR is available. It's as required by statute. Here at this meeting, it's been signed by everyone except the mayor, and the staff recommends approval.
Thank you very much. Counsel, anything you want to comment on that before I move to applicant? I see none. Applicant, I'd like to have you guys come up and, or you come up and give it a whirl. Name an address for the record, please.
Gary Allen Jr., 9179 Delane, Naples, Florida. We're very excited to get started and hope that we will get approval to, for our final plat today. We've got new members of our team here to help answer any questions that council may have.
If we give another yes vote tonight, because I feel like I voted yes on whatever's come my way, even though there are people out there wanting to know why I haven't done my part, discuss that. What happens next with you guys?
We start building it. So our first piece of equipment was actually dropped on the property on Friday, last Friday, so they are, they've already been given the green light to go, so we're expecting for them to start moving dirt ASAP, as in tomorrow.
Okay, so when you start moving dirt, is that infrastructure?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other concerns? I'm sure there are. Vice Mayor?
How long?
How long?
Time frame.
We're saying that it's a 12-month construction timeframe. We hope to get it done sooner than that, but I think that that is a safe window.
Okay, so 12 months for the infrastructure?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay, that helps.
All right, so you go infrastructure, and then I understand that this particular project can have multi-contractors for homes.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so when would that start happening?
Once the infrastructure is complete, then people will be able to build pending, you know, approval from Titusville and getting their building permits and whatnot in order.
And one, when will people be able to start purchasing projected homes?
Homes?
Well, I'll go with property, but clearly we're going to build homes out there. So the question is, and I guess they can go property first, and then when they get their property, they the ones who do the contract with the builder, right?
That is correct.
Okay, so when can they start buying the property to get the homes?
They can start buying the property when we get the plat recorded, so they'll be able to purchase the property prior to all of the infrastructure being complete. So we'll be, we'll be doing the infrastructure, they'll be doing their home plans, and once they, once they decide on a contract, you know, a builder and sign their contract, and that will dictate their construction timeframe.
Vice Mayor?
So are you taking deposits on property now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, how many? There's 90?
99.
99 lots?
Yes, ma'am.
How many have you had, do you have deposits on?
99.
Oh, 99?
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Let me interject here then, because when I said, when will they start buying the property, homes, then they're already done. That part's already over.
Well, I mean, they haven't closed, no transfer, they haven't purchased it, there's no transfer title yet.
Okay, I apologize. Let's go back.
I'm good.
Member Robinson?
Yes, I understand from your last presentation, there's going to be limitation, the buyers can find their own contractor, but you going to recommend specific contractors?
Yes, sir. I believe there's, there's five preferred builders that they, that are, have, I guess, passed the, they know the architectural guidelines in the community, and they're the approved builders.
Okay, and, but it still will be able for the buyer to get their specific contractor approved?
They select amongst the pre-approved builders.
And that's the only, that's the only choices that they have?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Member Stokel?
Okay, so just to clarify the timeline of what we just talked about. Deposits have been received, which can happen up until this point, but now after we approve final plat, that's when you actually can sell the lots, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So that will happen, right, assuming if it's approved? And then, as well, the infrastructure, you plan to start after final plat approval?
Yes, ma'am.
And then, once the infrastructure is completed, hopefully within the year, 12 months, that is when the actual people that purchase those lots can start building? Or can they start building before the infrastructure's done?
I think, I think that technically they can start before every last item is done, but I think part of that has to do with approval from Titusville. So I think that, for instance, the sidewalks, those are not going to be in. People will be building, because if you put all the sidewalks in, then when people build their house, they're going to bust, they're going to break them up.
Okay.
So that's, that's a bonded item that will remain until a later date. So people, you know, will, they'll be at most, if not all the houses built before all the sidewalks are in.
Okay, so assuming final plat approval passes, infrastructure will start soon, hopefully be done, completed in a year, and then?
Hopefully sooner than a year, yeah.
Okay, okay, that's, hey, I like to hear it, too. I've been hearing about this project for a while, and I'm very excited about it, so thank you for.
All right, I see nothing else. I would say, and I've said this as often as I can, I think it was my first year of sitting down there as a council member, first time I saw this group come to me, I think it was Antigua Bay at the time, I can't remember, but I was all excited about it then, and I learned a lot as a council member that just because you vote yes and you're ready to go doesn't mean anything's going to happen. So I'm really counting on you guys, if we get, go forward with this, that, you know, we're going to do however we vote, and then I hope you guys do what you need to do. Okay, and I may call you back up, or you may want to come back up, because you can have the last word, so we'll go to, I see nobody else here, so we'll go to cards.
We have one card, Stan Johnston.
Come on, let's go, let's go.
Now, y'all have a copy of this?
Yep.
You ready?
Yep.
Okay, my name is Stan Johnston. I'm a registered professional engineer, and I'm not against this project, but I'm here because of some things that are happening in here in the city of Titusville, and I've, I'm going to identify number three and number four on the back of this sheet that can relate to any project in the city of Titusville. And what's going on is, is that this particular piece of paper here that has listed of 12 engineering atrocities that are happening here in the city of Titusville regarding nonsense and so forth that are continuing because of city's closed doors, gag orders, no answers to questions. Just reading the first sentence of this on the back, it says, "Please be advised that although I am ignored by the city," I'm a professional engineer, "and I'm licensed to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the, of the public, and I've gotten a lot of resistance."
Stop clock, please. Stan, can you relate it to this project?
Oh, yes, this is very much related to this project.
Go ahead, relate it to the project. Let me hear about this project. Start clock.
And I'm, so it is my duty to report the following infractions, and I'm identifying number three and number four, and, and I expect that you, that anybody who comes to the city of Titusville is going to be, is going to come into special problems, because the city of Titusville, we have closed doors, we have gag orders, we have no answers to questions. I have numerous questions. All these, these, these 12 items have questions, no answers. No answers from City Manager? He won't answer my questions. No return phone calls, no response to emails and so forth. City officials won't respond to my questions and so forth, because there's gag orders, there's closed doors, and so forth. And these are serious issues. One of the, one of the outstanding features of this is the city of Titusville is Mr. Larice and some other people, they're involved in fraud, fraud, and that is beginning February 12th, 2019. That's number four on your list there, and regarding the fraud, and I have even a poster about that. So if anybody wants to find out about the fraud, you can see it on email, not email, but on YouTube. You go on YouTube, you can see it, it's on February 12th, 2000, last year, no, 2019, February 12th, 2019. So in that particular case, is that there's some kind of wild claims that city has paid $70,000 for a report, and I can't get the report. So that includes Mrs. Nelson and so forth, and Mrs. Stokel, who's supporting this, this fraud. So I mentioned that, and also, we have, just recently, on August 27th? I'm asking for two more minutes?
Yeah, and I see none. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Counsel, anything you want to add to what's been said? Applicant, anything you want to add? If, any, anybody over there? No, we're good? Then I can move on to the approval. I would take a motion to, for approval. And Vice Mayor?
Move to approve the final plat and covenants for Tranquility Plan Development Phase One and accept the performance bonds for completion of the required infrastructure, sidewalks, and nature walking trail on Parcel 11A and the required utility easement.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. City Attorney, are we good on that motion? Staff?
I'm sorry, we need approval of the covenants as well. That's?
Would that be same or separate?
No, it can be in here. I'm sorry, it should have been in here, but just say approval of, it's both the Tranquility Master Association covenants and the Phase One covenants.
Okay, the covenants for Phase One?
And the Master Association.
And the Master Association.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, are we good? Okay, we're solid with that. I have a motion from Vice Mayor Nelson. I have a second from Member Stokel. Roll call vote.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously with Member Jordan absent. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Let's see, let's see those bulldozers roll. All right, thank you. We're going to let you guys get out of here, and we'll go to the next thing.
Yes, sir, Mayor. We're on Item 6A, which is the Affordable Housing Liaison Position. At the September 18th, 2021 meeting, Planning and Zoning Commission appointed Regular Member Richardson to serve as the liaison to the board and to fill, and to fill a vacant position. Staff is seeking council's confirmation of P&amp;Z Regular Member Richardson's liaison service on the AHAC. Recent changes to the ship rules no longer require confirmation via adopted resolution. However, our code does, so what, you have the hard copy of the resolution on your, on the dais, and the resolution number is 332021. Terms will renew automatically for the appointed members unless resignation is received and approved, or the members no longer meets qualification criteria. So staff is recommending that you confirm Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Member Joseph Richardson to the AHAC to fill a vacant classification of liaison and approve Resolution 332021.
Okay. Counsel, any comments or questions? I see none. Do I have any cards?
Stan Johnston?
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. Staff, anything further? Counsel, anything further? I see none. Let me have a motion?
Move to confirm Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Member Joseph Richardson to the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee to fill the vacant classification of liaison.
And approve Resolution 332021.
I have approved the resolution 33-2021.
Second?
I got a motion from Vice Mayor and a second by Member Stokel. Roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes, motion passes unanimously.
Onto Item 6B, which is the Planning and Zoning Commission. Currently, there is one vacancy for a regular member with an unexpired term to expire on January 31st, 2023. There are five applications on file for your consideration, Mr. Aaron Fason, Mr. DeYoung, Mr. Christopher Childs as currently an alternate member, Mr. Robert Johnston, and Ms. Catherine Riley, who is also an alternate member. They have all expressed their willingness and desire to serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission as a regular member with an unexpired term to expire on January 31st, 2023. If alternate members Riley and Childs are not appointed as regular member, they would like to continue to serve as alternate members. Alternate member Riley, current, her current term as an alternate is set to expire on January 31st, 2022, and alternate member Childs' current term as an alternate member expires on January 31st, 2023.
All right, Member Robinson?
Yes, as I look through all of, and we've done, went through this a couple of times this year, which is, you know, not the best thing to do, and because we have been up with members, down with members, and I always like people to get experience, and we want to do the best with all of the individuals that have applied, and whenever you, I am ready to make some recommendations according to what I, I see.
I think what I would like to do before we do that, would have those that are here have their three minutes to tell us a little background, or they don't have to take three minutes, they can take one minute, but let them speak, and then I'll come to counsel, and your words are appreciated, and I echo those. So before we go to our comments, those who are here, who are applying for the position, I would like you to come up, raise your hand, here you are, and come up, come on up, and then we'll go from there. I think we will probably have all five here. So you have up to three minutes, and you don't have to take all that time, but we just want to hear a little bit more about who you are. Come on up here, and name and address, and go ahead and speak. Yeah, right up here. And thank you so much. right up here. And thank you so much.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Riley. You chose me to serve as an alternate on the Planning and Zoning Commission about a year ago. It's a lot of hard work, but I'm used to that. It's something I know that you're used to as well. Each of you has served the Titusville community even before you ran for city council. Instead, instead of looking at my experience for 39 years in Titusville as a lemon, this evening I'm going to make lemonade for you. Being an attorney has given me the opportunity to serve as attorney for the sheriff Jake Miller for five years. Jake was the Titusville police chief before he ushered in good government at the sheriff's office. I sued on his behalf to confiscate assets of felons, convicted felons, of assets that they had used in the commission of felonies. Results, thousands in cash, cars, and boats that were used in drug deals. Being an attorney helped me hone my writing skills such that I was able to write a grant application for a rubber track at Astronaut High School, and I was able to secure with help $60,000 to build that rubber track. Being an attorney helped me to weed my way through a morass of regulations and red tape to figure out how to get the support committee of Cape Canaveral National Cemetery to get them 501(c)(3) status while I was chair of that organization. Being an attorney certainly didn't hurt when I was fundraising chairman for Project Graduation at Astronaut High School. Being an attorney has taught me about bulk reading, something that is helpful to a regular member of planning and zoning where we are faced twice a month with a boatload of documents to examine. Our job at planning and zoning is not to make decisions, but to recommend action to you. Once we make those recommendations, we've done our part, and what you choose to do with our recommendation is your choice. Titusville's ordinance says about planning and zoning action, "Every case shall be subordinate to and subject to the approval of the city council." If you will give me your vote tonight, I will humbly work towards well-thought-out recommendations to assist you in your valuable service to our beautiful city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, a question from Mayor Nelson. Mayor, Vice Mayor Nelson.
So Kathy, how long have you been an alternate on planning and zoning?
Actually 11 months.
Okay, and during that time, I know there's a boatload of documents to read because we have to read the same ones. How, yeah, how long does it take you to prepare for a planning and zoning meeting?
It takes hours, it takes hours. And then you go to the meetings, and like your meetings, sometimes they go three, four, five hours. So it's, it's a lot of dedication.
And I would say that being an attorney is very helpful in reading ordinances.
I would definitely agree with you, Jolene.
Okay. Um, and you're willing to do this?
Well, when, when you, when, when I, when you appointed me as the alternate, I had to go to the meetings, obviously, and some of the time I got to vote, so I had to prepare every time because you never knew who was going to be at the meeting as a regular member and who was going to be absent. So it was just, so I thought to myself, well, if I'm going to prepare that much, maybe I should put my name in. It's about a year as a regular member, and I would appreciate all of your votes. Thank you.
Thank you.
I see no other lights. Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Fason, come on up. How you doing? Name and address and say what you say.
Wonderful. Well, good afternoon, Mayor Diesel, Vice Mayor. My name is Aaron Fason. I live at 530 Locksley Lane. Um, planning and zoning is a great board to sit on when you want to know what's going on here in the city of Titusville. Our founding fathers had a great idea when they said that we are a nation of citizen participation. And I tried to do this before, once before with the previous mayor, that I came up and I said I wanted to participate with our local city government. And at that time, I was not chosen. Luckily, however, in 19, excuse me, 2018, I was elected to sit on the planning and zoning member, sit, planning and zoning board as a sitting member. So when we talk about the jargon that's in those documents, I'm very well about reading those. Aside from that, I was also a contracting officer for the Army for 10 years. So reading the jargon and reading that literature is absolutely no problem. But what I do want to do is represent my city proudly. I was born and raised here in Titusville, had the great fortune of serving our country for over 22 years all over the world. I've written, I've written contracts in Germany, California, Georgia, Alabama, Iraq, and, uh, and Alaska. So again, the reading of the documents is not a problem, understanding is not a problem, but getting our citizens, citizens to be a part of the process, however, that's a wonderful opportunity, and that's what I'm here to do.
Tell me about your first stint on the planning zoning. I'll be honest, till I read the application, I didn't realize that. So I think it was 2018, you said? Tell me about that, and tell me why you're not still on there. What's, what was that all about?
So I had a job, uh, actually, my, one of my former coworkers right there is Doug. Um, I worked traveling all over the world. I worked as a test engineer for Lockheed, where we were installing modeling simulations all over the world, from Germany to Alaska to everywhere. And so that job caused me to always be gone, and so I didn't want to be a hindrance to the board, uh, and so therefore I resigned my position.
All right, thank you. Any, uh, Member Stokel?
Question. If for some reason you are not chosen as a board member, would you be interested in serving in the alternate role?
Yes, I would.
Okay, thank you.
I see no others. Thank you, sir. Uh, is Mr. Childs here? Say again, I'm sorry. Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Yes, got, gotcha. Thank you.
I'm a new member to this community. I've lived here now five years. I started working over at NASA. Uh, all of my life, I've been with, uh, software and coming up to speed on every single contract that, that I came across. Again, there was lots of documentation to read. My last job was QA. So there, I had to read each document very carefully on subjects that I really had no expertise in, but yet was able to find flaws and correct those flaws. I'm retired now, and I want to give to my community. I have the time, I've got the energy, I've got quite a few different kinds of, um, uh, factors to help. I've done some project management. I do some very good analysis. I come up to speed very quickly on different areas, and I think that that could be, and, and planning and zoning to me is extremely important in this community. I'd like to see it grow. I'd like to see it grow responsibly. I like to make sure that things are done correctly. Uh, Titusville is a really nice community to live in. I came here, I love the beach at Playa Linda, I'm seeing growth in the downtown area, and I'm really ecstatic. So I'd like to see that continue, and I'd like to see it continue in a quality way.
Uh, Vice Mayor.
I'm going to butcher your name, you know that.
You just call me John.
Okay, John, I can do that. So, John, if you're not appointed tonight, would you be interested in either us keeping your application for future, future positions, or would you be interested in any other board?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, and matter of fact, I already applied for another board prior to this, and you had picked out the most ideal candidate, and that was for the environmental group.
Yeah, yeah.
That lady had impeccable, impeccable credentials.
She is impeccable.
I was happy to see that.
But I'm like, we have Parson Rec, we have TEC, and we have a variety of boards. So if you're not selected tonight, we would like to keep your application.
And I would be, and I would be good with that. I mean, I, I'm a firm believer in picking the correct person for the correct job.
And me too, me too.
And, but I still want to help the community in whatever capacity I can.
John, that sounds perfect. Thank you.
And, uh, looking at your application, uh, you know, and don't, and I know you don't, but don't sell yourself short. I like the fact that you have such an outstanding history in this world, and you're willing to, uh, use your talents to help us. So I don't know what will happen tonight, but I definitely want to make sure you're part of, part of what we're doing going forward.
Thank you.
Especially your positive attitude. I appreciate that. Thank you very much. And I believe that would leave us to Mr. Johnston.
Stan Johnston, I'm a candidate for this, and you have my handout, and also, uh, it refers to this, so, um, you've got some good, um, candidates for this. And, uh, if you, if you, um, select me, you understand is that, is that at this time I'm exposing a number of cities', uh, uh, indiscretions, you might say. Uh, from the, this front page here, uh, it, it showed, it, it, let me read it to you. It says, uh, uh, purpose, and this is an exposure of engineering problems, violations in Titusville, Florida detrimental to the health, safety, welfare of the public, and that's what I'm licensed to protect as a professional engineer. And it's prepared by me, uh, and, uh, and it has on here, um, uh, exposes the city manager for his dishonesty and his, um, uh, his stupidity. On the back here, there's 12, 12 items here, and, uh, and understand is that when I'm, I'm on this, if you select me, I will be also exposing this to truth, which is, is unpleasant to many people. But our city manager is, uh, I see them, him as, uh, regarding this dishonesty.
Stop the clock, please. I want to hear why you're the person for this spot, okay? I, I do, and, and I've heard all I want to hear about city manager.
Yes.
And as a matter of fact, by the rules of speak, you're not supposed to repeat what you said already, and I've got to believe you've already talked about him. I really want to hear about you. For the next minute and a half, I want to hear about you, not city manager.
All right.
Thank you.
I'm, I've been here 50 years, and I'm, uh, my, I'm a son of an engineer, and, uh, I've, uh, registered in, examined in mechanical and civil engineering, and I'm also a, uh, registered land surveyor, inactive license at this time. Uh, and I've done numerous subdivisions and site plans in the city of Titusville and surveys. Um, and, uh, and my current, uh, expertise is, is, uh, as a, as a citizen is, is that I see that our city manager is incredibly corrupt. He's tainted.
Stop the clock.
He's saturated.
Stop the clock. Are you going to talk about you now?
This is about me. When I talk about, when I talk about my...
You talk about you, or we're going to move on, okay?
In other words, when I talk about...
Well, stop, I'm talking now. That's the second warning. I've asked you to talk about you, and you're going to city manager this and city manager that. I can't tell you how much I don't want to hear about city manager anymore.
Yeah.
You got 53 seconds, and you can fill that with about you, or we're going to be done. Go.
Yeah. Well, I'm very disappointed in, in what I see in, in the city as far as leadership in the city. Uh, that's what I see, and it's from my expertise. And I see a, a lot of dishonesty and, uh, nonsense, and, uh, expenditure of funds that shouldn't be spent upon. And I, and I, I've given you, I've given you a list of this, and this has to do with what I would be doing in P&amp;Z, because the city of Titusville has had big problems, especially because of the leadership. There's such corruption, and those closed doors, gag orders, and, uh, I can't get answers to questions. In other words, I send emails and so forth, and even our, our Florida Today paper is not truthful about what's going on in the city of Titusville. It's horrible what's going on here. It's just horrible. And I have this within me.
Thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome.
I, I, as you know, we've talked before, I would definitely dispute your description of what's going on in the city of Titusville. It's horrible. So I, that's, that's my two cents. So thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Dan.
All right, that being said, uh, we have some very qualified candidates. We are the winners tonight, no matter how this goes. That being said, I want to, um, hear from counsel now where you're leaning, and, uh, there is no wrong way to go. Um, Vice Mayor.
I, my preference would be to appoint Kathy Riley as a member and Aaron Fason as an alternate. I think both of them have experience, both of them have been on planning and zoning. Kathy has been there for 11 months, and she's right. It takes a lot of preparation to do it. Um, I think that John could do it also, but these guys already have the experience. I, I would like to hold on to John's application and, uh, find him a spot someplace, but this was my preference for tonight. And I am sure Kathy probably spends hours going over those documents, and I think that's what we need. And realize, we have no attorneys on there right now.
You'd notice that.
I noticed that. That's an inside joke, guys.
And, and hold one second, Member Stokel. I, I would agree with where you're at with that. Um, I would also like to make sure that John is not going anywhere. Notice I use that first name, John, because I have no chance of the last name. Um, Aaron, Aaron Fason, what you bring, every time I discuss anything with you, and we've talked, and just so it's known, I can tell you that, uh, Aaron is very involved in, uh, the community and very involved in working on, uh, decreasing, uh, any violence or crime in our, our community. Um, and that's got nothing to do with what he's trying to do here. Uh, he's just that guy. His family is just that family. And, um, I like what I heard, um, you know, and this is not a secret. I've given every explanation I can on this. I love P&amp;Z, they work very hard. Um, we pretty much agree with them on, uh, probably in the 90% range, but, uh, I, I like, uh, what I've heard that, um, advisory board, and, um, you know, give us what you think, and, and we'll take it from there, and we appreciate that. What this P&amp;Z has done over the years that I've been here is work really, really hard to give us their best, uh, advice and, and then move on. Uh, Member Stokel?
Yes, I would just like to say I agree with the Vice Mayor, just listening to all the qualified candidates. Um, I would like to see Catherine Riley serve in that role. I think you've done an excellent job as the alternate member. I can tell how much work you put into it. Uh, and as I've said before, I, when it comes to P&amp;Z, when I make my decision, I'm looking for a very well-rounded board, to Member Robinson's point. Um, I, I take what the board says very seriously, and I honestly want to see not some fighting on that board, but some very different opinions because it helps me make a better decision. Um, so when I'm looking at applicants, I do want to see a board that's well-rounded, not leaning all in one direction. And I think you will help that with that board at this time. I would like to see Aaron in that alternate role. I think he would be a tremendous asset, and when a position potentially opens up, obviously, we don't know who's applying at that time, but I would like to see him eventually get in that role. And for John, I was looking at his application. I think he would be excellent candidate when a opening comes up for TEC on the Environmental Commission. I think he would be great. Um, so that would be kind of where I'm leaning at this time.
Member Robinson?
Yes, um, I, I too, um, enjoy looking at all of the applications and the qualifications, and, uh, in my short, uh, time here as, uh, as a city council member, it is important that we, uh, bring individuals on board that care about, uh, our city. Uh, I am partial to retired military people who, uh, is, are energetic when they return to their homeland, uh, as well. And, uh, but I also, uh, understand that experience, uh, with a, uh, wide range of, uh, Bivard County techniques are, are... are important in the city and to be able to do things effectively. And so I, I commend and I thank all of the applicants that have applied. But I too would ask that my first choice to move up would be Ms. Riley. Because I was, when she applied last time, I, that was my hope, is that she would stay around and if the opportunity would come along. So I don't change that at this particular, and I'm hoping that Mr. Fason will be, he speaks well. I've had a couple of interaction with him when I was at North Brevard Charities. He has given me something that I love to see is consistency and dedication to, to do the right thing and to make a difference. And I love that. And I, I give him applaud for that. And, and I hope that my choice, and he will accept it, my choice for the alternate seat would be Mr. Fason.
Thank you, Member Robinson. I, I would agree with everything that's been set up here. I will go back to what I originally said. We're the winners here today. Excuse me. The, the quality of applicants is, is amazing. And it wasn't, and we on council, who's been here very long, it wasn't many years ago, we were having to deal with one applicant and maybe two. You know, we've got four or five out there that are very qualified. And I don't want to lose what we've got out there. I also like having an alternate move up to the, the top spot there. Because you're there. You, you, you get the culture, you know where you're at. And that's also why I would like you, Mr. Fason, to move into the alternate spot. A, you've already got an idea how this all works. B, you get in there and, and an alternate at this level is very different in that if there's somebody absent, you're stepping in, and you're sitting down, and you're, you're voting. You've got to be prepared. So I, I totally agree that Ms. Riley and Mr. Fason are the ways I'd want to go. I don't want to lose John. And one who is not here tonight, and I don't know why, so I'm not going to comment on that, except to say that Chris Childs also has done some good things and is doing what he can to be more involved in the city. So I appreciate that as well. So I will entertain a motion. What we will do is we'll first vote on the, the seat, the position. And then if we go with the alternate, we will then work on the alternate. So let's work on the first one, please. Vice Mayor Nelson.
Move to appoint Kathy Riley as a regular member to the Planning and Zoning Commission with an unexpired term to expire on January 31st, 2023.
Second.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor, a second from Member Stokoe. Roll call, vote.
Member Stokoe?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously. Thank you very, very much. I look forward to great things. Can we now move to, now that the alternate has moved up, can we move to nominate an alternate? Vice Mayor.
I would move to nominate Aaron Fason as an alternate member to the Planning and Zoning Commission with an unexpired term to expire on January 31st, 2022 or 23? 22.
22. Member Stokoe?
Second.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor, a second from Member Stokoe. Roll call, vote.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokoe?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously. And, and thank you, Mr. Fason. I appreciate you very much. Ms. Riley, thank you. And Mr. John, don't go far. We're going to keep on calling on you. All right. Thank you very much. We move to the next point of order. So you guys are certainly, you don't have to hang out and watch if you don't feel like it. City Manager.
Yes, sir. We're on to item 6C, which is the North Brevard Commission on Park and Recs. Currently, there's one vacancy with an unexpired term to expire on August 31st, 2023. There's currently one application on file for your consideration. Ms. Corinne Oderman has expressed her willingness and desire to serve on this commission.
As a member of that board, I would, not a member, I always say that. As a liaison for that board, I can tell you that we're in need of a city representative. But having just spoken how we spoke, I would also say that I think there's something to be said for having two or three or four applicants. I would like to hear some talk on that, and then I will address the applicant. Vice Mayor.
I would like to see more than one applicant. And she may be the most qualified around, but I would like to see us have a choice of several different applicants. So that would be my request, is that we table this and re-advertise it.
Member Robinson.
I, I concur. I want to make sure that we keep in, keep the same standards for, for all. Having one applicant, you know, especially, we give a time limit for that, you know, if no one else comes along with a reasonable time, that's a different story. But because, and I, I believe that the, the person had, applied is very well-qualified and a good candidate. But we want to see, give someone else and market the position and, and come back and look at it again with, if we don't get, within a reasonable time, if we don't get any more applicants, we appoint the one that has applied.
Thank you, Member Robinson. I'm going to even state that I would say that by next meeting, by our next meeting, whether we have one or five, we fill that position. Because I can also tell you as a liaison, that our last two board, Parks and Rec meetings were canceled because we didn't have, we knew we weren't going to have a quorum. So not having our representative hurts that. How do you say your name, Ms. Oderman? Otterman? Otterman? Come on up, please. That's our only applicant. First of all, I want to thank you for applying. I want to thank you for your enthusiasm and your husband's enthusiasm, because he was pretty excited last time, too.
Yeah.
I want to make it very clear that this is absolutely no comment on your abilities or anything else. But as you just saw us go through, five very solid applicants for a position, that's kind of what we want to get back to. But that being said, I'd still like to hear briefly what your background is and give us a little head start here on what, you know, what, why you wanted this position. And your name and address for the record.
I'm Corinne Oderman. I live at 1018 Indian River Avenue. I'm a program manager for Cubic Defense. I was a program product manager for the Marine Corps the last 13 years. I just moved to Titusville in January, so I'm new to the community. But I have three kids, and I love the parks that are here. I love being by the river. I saw that there was an opening, and I really wanted to be a participant in this area. There's a mountain bike park that's around the corner, and it needs some help. And what I was really interested in was just like donating money to the, the cause. And they said, there's a position open in Parks and Rec. Well, maybe I could be more impactful there. And now with my new job, I'm able to do something like join a commission where I wasn't before as a government employee.
Well, that's very good. And I, I look forward to working with you. And I would take it to the next level that, I don't know what will happen in the next meeting, if we even get another applicant, because if we don't, we're moving forward. And again, we're struggling to get a quorum. And, and some of that had to do with some people with COVID, and some things are getting better. But by the next meeting, we're going to definitely want to fill that position. And I appreciate your enthusiasm. And you're, again, one of those people that I would like to make sure we keep, no matter what happens, that we keep on our list and get you, you know, get your feet on the ground with us here in the city, because you look like you have a lot to offer. Don't leave. Member Stokoe.
Yep. No, I was just going to say, I'm okay with moving forward. But if you guys want a table, I'm okay with that as well. But to the mayor's point, I definitely would like to get this taken care of by next meeting. Your application is amazing. I love that you only have been here since January, and you're already looking to get involved and serve. I just feel like that's a testament to who you are, and I think you'd be a great asset. Like I said, I'm okay with going forward. But if you guys want a table, just would like to do it by next meeting.
Member Jordan?
Yep, I like you. I'm going to tell you right now. So I, I, we need to make sure that we get more people like you, for sure. And of course, when it comes down to a husband who is very enthusiastic about the wife, then we, we certainly want to make sure that we get, get you involved. Because no one knows you better than the person you live with. And that spoke volumes for your husband. So I'm in agreement, but I would make a decision right now if you ask me. But I'll go with what the majority says. And, but please, come back.
Oh, I'll be back.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much. And we don't want to lose you.
Oh, I'm, I'm around. I'm not going to.
But I can't help but say after last meeting, I know about wanting to make decisions, so. You may remember the tree people. Anyway, that's a whole nother ballgame. So we need to vote to table this.
Cards first and then?
Okay, right. Okay. Yeah. Yeah. Cards, please? No cards? Okay. Do I have a motion to table this?
I'd make the motion to table it to the next meeting. I took your spot.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor Nelson.
Second.
I have a second from Member Jordan to table. Roll call, vote.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokoe?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes. Motion passed unanimously. We definitely expect to see you at the next meeting. And again, I can't make any promises, but we're definitely going to make a decision, because we need to start having enough people have a meeting at Parks and Rec. So thank you so very much and your enthusiasm, both of you. Matter of fact, talk to your husband about, see what maybe he wants to do later. So, all right. Thank you very much. We move on. City Manager.
Onto 6D. This is the Code Enforcement Special Magistrate Semiannual Report. It's in your agenda packet. No actions required.
I want to comment on that. That was amazing, looking at that report. Looking at the volume of cases that they have addressed, and even more importantly, the number of cases they have resolved. And I don't know how it compares to previous years, but very, very impressed with those, those charts and graphs and the hard work that's going on rapid fire. And I just wanted to say that before we move past that. So I appreciate that. Member Robinson?
I'm sorry.
Okay, no problem. No problem. All right. So we move to?
Petitions and requests, sir.
Petitions and requests. Time's up.
Let's start the time. Stan Johnston, I'm an engineer and. I have a color copy of this handout. And it's of particular interest because it has some photos that says that the city of Titusville and the Florida Today paper and FDEP are being very dishonest, just from the photos, just from the photos. For example, the city of, the, the city and FDEP have approved a consent order that says that the city of Titusville stopped sewage flowing into the river on December the 19th. However, here's pictures. There's a picture right here in the middle here, and that's flowing sewage. Flowing sewage, big time, big time. And it's going right to the river through Spaceview Park. And that was, that was in, in December and in January. And then, right here, over on the very lower left-hand corner, is another picture. It's take, it's after February the 18th, soon after February the 18th. And on February the 18th, sewage was flowing still into the river. But the consent order says it stopped December the 19th. But we have police, we have city police, we have city employees, and we have other people that say, hey, we saw the sewage flowing into the river, but the Florida Today paper won't report it. The Florida Today paper has these photos. And people have contacted them, the city and FDEP, but they won't tell the truth. So anyhow, we've got a problem here, not just with the city of Titusville, but with our government. And our, our newspaper won't even tell the truth. This is amazing. This is amazing, and it's shocking to me. It's not shocking to me, but it's shocking to all these, these people who saw the sewage going in there, into the river. And we're talking about people who are in TEC, Titusville Environmental Commission and so forth. The city's lying. Our city manager is lying. He's, he's, he's completely dishonest in this particular issue. And it's, it's, he's just tainted, saturated, dripping with dishonesty. And stupidity.
Stop the clock. We, so we don't, you've already talked about him.
Oh, yeah.
Help me out. You're done with that, okay? You've got 17 seconds to not talk about him. Start.
Okay. So, so it says here, it says, right here, it says, and it says, "Please see reverse insightful explanation of examples of engineering problems, nonsense, responsibilities, viol, and it says, misrepresentations, violations, dishonesty, secrecy, and fraud."
Time's up. All right. Real quick before you go?
I'm asking for another, man.
Because I'm sure you're going to come up here at Consent Agenda. I want you to talk about the consent agenda when you get here.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right.
Onto Consent Agenda Item. Council, are there any questions that you may have for staff? Are the, council, are there any items that you want to pull? Clerk, are there any cards?
One individual has signed up for seven items.
Okay. With your permission, Mayor, I'd like to read the titles for the Consent Agenda items.
Thank you, sir.
Approved Resolution 322021, Approving Temporary Road Closure of State Roads for Special Events, the Titusville Christmas Parade. 8B, Authorize the Mayor to Sign the 2021 Urban and Community Forest Grant. Item 8C, Authorize the Mayor to Execute Amendment Number Two to Brevard County Save Our Indian River Lagoon Grant Extension for the Titusville High School Baffle Box. Consent Agenda Item 8D, Accept the Easement from R.W. Kirk Family Limited Partnership Florida Wonderland Lift Station. Consent Agenda Item 8E, Approve the Renewal of Medical Reinsurance Coverage for Medical Stop-Loss Insurance for October 1, 2021 to September 30, 2022. Consent Agenda Item 8F, Accept the easement, utility easement of 53.9 square feet from Pop Holdings LP Popeye's Restaurant. Consent Agenda Item 8G, Acceptance of Utility Easement of 70 square foot from Pop Holdings LP Popeye's Restaurant. Consent Agenda Item 8H, Approve the Use of the Vendor's, Vendor of Record Permission to Issue Open Blanket Order, Purchase Orders During FY 2022 to Approve Vendors of Record Exceeding the $50,000 and $15,000 Ordinance Limits. And Consent Agenda Item 8I, Approve the Renewal of All Lines of Insurance Coverage.
Thank you very much. Counsel, any comments? I see none. Call the cards.
Stan Johnston?
Stan, before you get started. Whatever you signed up for.
Yes, sir.
Whatever you circled on that paper.
Yes, sir.
Whatever you stood up for, I want you to talk about that.
Yes.
And I'm telling you right now, if I hear city manager anything, we're going to stop.
City manager's involved.
No, 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 no.
Oh, yes, he is.
No, that's your opinion, and you've given it.
I should give you my opinion.
So you don't need to keep giving it. So let's try to see what we can do here. What are you going to talk about?
Well, are you ready? Start the clock. Let's go. All right. Here we go. On Consent Agenda Item 8A, ready? Approval. 8B, approval. 8C, approval. 8D, approval. Am I going too fast? Okay. 8E, neither, or neither. And 8H, neither, or neither. 8I, neither. Now, there's some special issues about some of these neathers, and also the approval. It's because we're having, we're, we're having some issues. For example, two of these items have to do with insurance. And right now is that we're having issues with the health, with health of people. And this is the handout I've given you. It has to do with the health of people.[1791.28] It has to do with the health of people. For example, I've already mentioned to you, well, I've already mentioned to you about number 11, city's use of city employees. It's on the back. City use of city employees, you also have it, Mr. Denero, number 11 back there. City use of city employees not vaccinated, not trained, to work with raw sewage spill. So our insurance people need to know this. There's a number of things that our insurance people, that I want to contact, the insurance providers, and you know what? The city of Titusville will not give me the names of the insurance providers. I've talked to risk management, said, we're not going to give it to you. I do a request for records, they won't give it to me. These insurance providers should know what risky issues the city of Titusville is going on. You're hiding it from them, just as you're hiding many things, like Mr. -- you know? He's hiding. He is. He is. He's doing it. He's hiding them. He's still hiding them. Okay. So what's going on is, this is a serious issue, that the city of Titusville is treating their employees with gag orders, closed doors. In other words, don't talk about this stuff. Don't talk to Stan Johnston. But it's leaking. And not only that, is we just had a consent order that completely ignores this. Let me put it upside down. That's another insurance issue. The city of Titusville is spraying the public with sewage and cars with sewage. You look over here in this handout. This is what I have to do with the handout. Look over here in the lower left-hand corner, a photo by Joe Denero. What's it show? It shows the hood of my car covered with sewage.
Stop the clock. What are you talking about here? What number?
We've got two of them. We have especially, for example, right here.
Start the clock.
8I, Renewal of All Lines of Insurance Coverage.
All right.
Okay? So right now, we're talking about insurance, and we're talking about the dishonesty. I can't even contact the insurance coverage to tell them what's going on. And in other words, like right now, is that, see this right here? Guess what they do? We ignore it. And not only did the city ignore it, Florida Today ignored it, FDEP ignores it. People in the city know it's happening, but yet it can't get out. It can't get out. So the news can't get out. The truth cannot be told. And so, but look at this picture. See this picture? This is the picture of Sandpoint Park, and right here it says fountain, sewage spray in background from Sandpoint Park, pond polluted with sewage for over four months. Here's a picture that says it's happening. It's going on. City denies it. It's funny. It's real funny. Oh, it's real funny. So this is what we're going. And not only that, is, see, see this sign? On December the 17th, Laura Lee Thompson called the city and called the Parks and Rec, and I called Parks and Rec too later, saying, hey, turn off the fountains. We couldn't get anybody to turn off the fountains. They were just joyfully just continued it. And not only that, on January the 12th, I went ahead and spoke and wrote to the council members, turn off the fountains, turn off the fountains. I'm a registered engineer. It's unsafe. I approached county health department. I approached the governor of the state of Florida. Governor of the state of Florida, they had me on, Budsmann contacted me and said, contact the FDEP.
Stop the clock one more time.
This is insurance issue.
No, no, no. Unless they stop the clock, that means I start talking.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
All right. I have no idea what part of the consent agenda you're talking about. You've talked about this. Again, we go back to, you're allowed to talk about something one time a meeting. I've heard more about that fountain today than I've heard since the last meeting.
Answer the questions.
So what I'm getting at is, are you even looking at this? You just come up, I approve, I approve, I approve, I don't. I'd like to hear what you have to say about some of these, but I haven't heard much about any of these. You're talking about insurance to some degree, but you've kind of left that too.
Insurance has got a lot to do with health.
Well, let's talk about insurance.
The city is compromising people's health.
Let's talk about what's on the consent agenda. Go.
Okay. The city is compromising the public's health. They didn't give any advisories about this. It's horrible what the city has done. And when I was talking about January the 12th, we had a meeting. We had a special meeting, then we had another meeting. And at one of those meetings, here's what people were saying. Nausea, headaches, diarrhea, vomiting, burning eyes, burning ears, burning throat, brain fog, confusion. That's not coming from me. That's coming from other people, complaints. And what did the city do? Absolutely nothing. What does our insurance company know? Nothing. Oh, insurance. That's right, insurance. Insurance. What is, in other words, when I told you about the Ombudsman contacting me, they said, contact FDEP. And what did the Brevard County Parks and Rec say? Contact the city. I contact the city, and what do you, I don't get, I get, the city doesn't respond. I want to contact, I go to Garden Street office, I said, I want to contact Mr. Stoffler. I want to contact somebody, talk to somebody else, talk to another man. Didn't talk to anybody. I leave a message. Nobody's going to return. Nobody's going to turn off these fountains. We're going to continue to spray sewage on people, not for two days or a week. Now, I want you to tell, I started December the 17th, people started complaining. Then I told you January the 12th. Well, I wrote this. I made this poster long after January the 12th, maybe a week or so later. I mean, you can tell from this poster. You know, that was in the demonstration that we had. So the city is not responding. You ought to be able to hire somebody to make, you know, we got stupidity on the upper level of our government. Stupidity and nonsense just beyond. It's superpower. It's a superpower of pied-piper of dishonesty and nonsense what we have. So I'm showing you on this is that, right here in the background, it shows the sewage spray. It has the poster here, and it even has this other post, this other sign. And this other sign talks about what's going on. But it's an issue for insurance also, and so that's why I'm letting you know about number 11, which is using employees who are not vaccinated, which I've told you before about that, to work with sewage, which I think is illegal. I can't even get a hold of OSHA. But I've been vaccinated, and y'all didn't vaccinate your people for working with sewage. And I think that insurance people would be very concerned about that. I think it's even violation of our employment conditions. But we just do it. So I can't get answers, gag orders and so forth. Now, regarding insurance, it's, the city has many engineering infractions which have to do with what I'm reporting to you. And all of these engineering issues, not just the spraying of cars and sewage, and not with just the sewage that's going into the river and you're not putting up signs, that's number 12. On number 12, I wrote failure to install adequate health hazard signs. In other words, I contacted FDEP, and they wouldn't come down and monitor the signs. So like in February, signs were gone. Y'all took my signs down. City took my signs down. And in February, there was no signs up that I saw at Spaceview Park. And there's many times there are no signs on the river. There's supposed to be, but there weren't. And FDEP didn't monitor it. In other words, I contacted FDPE, they didn't respond. So we have not just a problem with the city and our city management and our reporting from our Florida Today paper, but we have problems right here, I mean, with our Florida Today paper. They won't even report the nonsense. And I wrote this down here because the Florida Today is just, I wrote here, is that the Florida Today refused to preface atrocity, their misrepresentation of sewage spill and other atrocity to protect the city's foolishness and outrageous stupidity from public criticism and to add butter to Florida Today's bread. Thank you.
Counsel, any other comments?
Absolutely.
All right, I motion for the consent agenda. Thank you.
Mr., may I move that we approve Items 8A through 8I of the consent agenda?
Second.
I have a motion from Member Jordan, a second from Vice Mayor. Roll call vote.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokel? Yes. Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yep.
Consent agenda passes unanimously. City Manager, please.
On to item 12A, which is Resolution 31-2021, Code Enforcement Lean Amnesty Program Amendment. The Code Enforcement Lean Amnesty Program was approved with the requirement that the payoff amount shall be paid off within 60 days of the eligibility to participate in the program. Several participants have requested additional flexibility with the program in order to allow greater program participation. 120 days is now proposed for the repayment under the terms of this existing program.
Staff, anything? Counsel, anything? Cards on 12A.
Stan Johnston.
Any more cards? Motion, please.
Mr., may I move we approve Resolution Number 31-2021?
Second.
I have a motion from Member Jordan, a second by Vice Mayor Nelson. Roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yeah.
Member Jordan?
Yep.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously.
On to item 13, which is petitions and requests.
I, anybody, you've had your 47 minutes today. I see none. Mayor and Council reports. Yeah, let me start there. Vice Mayor Nelson?
Okay, can I say that I have good news, I think, for everybody, maybe except me?
Except you?
Except me. This is going to require more work. The Boys and Girls Club of Central Florida has hired a director for the Titusville Club.
Wow.
He is currently in training. Apparently, he is a Titusville kid, young man, a guy named Jeremy Jones. I don't know him. Jeff Davis sent me a text and said, I know him, I know his family, good kid.
Yeah, I've got that. Well, I want to report, you know, that they turned down my application for the job.
Joe, I won't turn. Joe, I got about two weeks' worth of painting and work. I won't turn down your application. So that means for the next two weeks, the volunteers will be double timing.
That's awesome. That's really, really great. It really is.
Joe and I sat on the front porch the other day. Yeah, front porch is wonderful.
Anybody else have anything they want to say? I'm surprised I don't see more there. There you go. That's what I was looking for. Member Stokel.
Yep. I wanted to give an update. There are, so I was appointed from the Florida League of Cities to serve as the vice chair for the advocacy committee for the entire state, which is pretty exciting. So I'm looking forward to that. I will be going up to Tallahassee through the Space Coast League of Cities. They're sending up two of us and paying for us to go up there during the committee weeks to meet regarding the priorities. Some of the priorities, I did want to give you an update from the Florida League, and I can email this to you guys if you guys are interested in it, but I'm sure you guys can tell that there's a lot of potential tying of local government hands with some of the items. So short-term rentals is still on there. There's also communication services tax reform, economic development incentives, transportation funding, tree protection, I thought was interesting that that was on there, local business tax preservation, annexation, cybersecurity. I've been really surprised just listening to some of the workshops at the annual conference on just how big that is and how some of the local governments are having to pay, essentially. So it's a big item. Affordable housing as well. And then another one I thought was interesting, they're addressing the PFAS in the water, which I know that has been brought up to us before.
Addressing the what? I'm sorry.
PFAS in the water, the chemical in there. So they're trying to bring that to the state to get them to address it. So a lot of items underway for that. And then I would like to request from the board, the Florida League of Cities Legislative Conference is in November, so I would like to request funding to attend that. And I think we do need a motion in a second.
How much is it?
Do you know how much it is?
I do not. I would guess.
Probably important.
Well, it's the registration fee. It would be, I believe it's two nights of lodging and then per diem for meals. So I would assume probably under $1,000, but I cannot.
And we have it built into the budget.
Yes.
Okay. So I'll make that motion for you.
I got to ask for a motion. I haven't asked yet. I'm thinking about it.
Oh, okay.
You bring your own peanut butter, I'll be good. All right, I got a motion from Vice Mayor. I have a second from Member Jordan. All those in favor say yes. Yes. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, guys.
Along those same lines, when we do host the League of Cities, I may briefly welcome them, but you've got to get up there and say something. So I mean, you're going to be the star of that. November 4th, 5th, something like that. November, what is that? It's early November. I think the first week in November. Member Stokel again?
Sorry, yes, I can tell you. It's normally the second Monday of the month, and it will be at Dixie Crossroads.
Okay, okay, second, maybe it's later.
And then also did want to let you guys know, if you weren't aware, the delegation meeting is September 29th. So I don't know if we're planning to present at all, or, I know in the past, we have, some years we have it, just as a city, if we felt like there were any priorities that we felt like bringing up to the delegation meeting, it is the 29th, and I think cards are due prior to that.
We can bring your priorities before you at the next meeting. I think it'll still meet the timeline to get it to them.
Okay, perfect. Thanks. That's all I had.
Anybody else? I don't see anybody. All right, well, then, good. I'll go real quick. Member Robinson and I participated in the 9/11 service at St. Teresa's. You know that I spoke earlier about the difficulty in trying not to get out this, that, and the other, but 20th anniversary, it just was very difficult to, you know, to say, I'm just not going. And it was an outstanding opportunity to present a proclamation to our police department and fire department, and then have some words for our police department. It was really cool, too, because Chief Lau had some police officers there and got to shake their hands as we went down the aisle, and the deputies, they had like 12 of them there, and the dog, and Sheriff Fiv, he was really nice. Member Robinson did the first reading, because it was a Catholic mass, and he definitely read it with some good Titusville flavor. And I told him that earlier. It was really, he did, he read it with passion, I want to say that. So that was outstanding. We do host the League of Cities in November, and in October, I go to the LID, I don't know if we call it seminar, conference, whatever it is in Rockledge. It doesn't take any money because I drive there, and I don't think I even had to pay a registration. So I look forward, I think it's a two-day event. I look forward to whatever we can grab there as we approach that topic. I really like the idea, the timing of this is that I can be there for two days and get some insight I probably don't have just yet. And lastly, I threw this out before, and I would throw it out if we had everybody here again. I'm just not sure we need 10 minutes on consent agenda. That's just a thought. If we keep it 10 minutes, we keep it at 10 minutes. I don't think we've ever had anybody stand up there that needed more than five or six to say what they had to say. I brought this up before, and I didn't feel like there was a whole lot of interest there to say we need to shorten it. But at least the thought process going of five or six minutes instead of 10, just seems like whoever stands up there, and I'm speaking generically, whoever stands up there would have a hard time filling 10 minutes and stay on topic. And that certainly gets to be quite the tug-of-war. So, you know, I don't know. Member Jordan, what do you think?
Oh, you know, I always have thoughts, for sure. And I'm not going to be bashful about this. I actually, after the last speaker, I spoke for 10 minutes, and the only thing I was thinking I actually, after the last speaker, I spoke for ten minutes, and the only thing I was thinking to myself, I wasted ten minutes of my life listening to nonsense. But you gotta balance that with the, the, the citizen's right, uh, to speak. But then I remembered that you asked Wanda to always read when the public should speak, and I thought, um, Wanda's, um, reading says that you can't speak on the same subject.
That's what I said.
Right?
I kept bringing that back to him, because he kept focusing on a certain subject.
That's what's happening, and we allow it. So I would ask that, um, we tighten up on that as much as possible. Um.
And, and, and let me just answer that, because I don't know that anybody's worked harder at this particular situation than I have. And it's, it's, it's kinda one of those things where the guy not calling the plays always has the right play. Uh, because there are times when, oh, you know, just let him go, because the more you stop him, the longer it goes.
Longer it is, yes.
And, uh, at the very least, I was wanting to get it away from the one particular topic, and I, we did that. And as I've discussed with City Attorney and City Manager, and they can testify to that, I'm used to a classroom. I'm used to, uh, being a dean. I'm used to being a football coach, and when you are not doing what you're supposed to do, you're out of here. Well, that's not how it works here. And, um, in some ways, that's the way it's supposed to be. The First Amendment is a wonderful thing when it's used properly. But when it's not, it causes a slowness and a disruption in meetings that is very difficult to control, because, um, City Attorney can address this more than I, but um, even when I was trying to, you know, like you tried to do what you were saying, that he's not where he needs to be when you stand up there and you say, I approve, I approve, I approve. I'm not sure why, that's not part of the deal. But when he tries to just tag just enough of insurance.
Right.
We might, City Attorney, address this, because I certainly have addressed it with you, and I've been on your care, saying to
Right.
City Attorney, I shouldn't have put up with this, but it's not as easy as that. That being said, City Attorney, can you clarify a little bit why it's not so easy to do that? Because if it was up to me, we'd pretend we're in the classroom, and you have to have proper behavior.
Well, you're right. It is a public meeting, and the legislature through, uh, different laws recently has advised every citizen has the right to speak to any proposition before counsel. And you're right, the First Amendment right to speak is about public meetings, and we balance that with your ability to do business, because you're here to do business. This is your business meeting. That's why we have portions of the meeting, like petitions and requests, which is an open forum. There's no restriction on, on that. But we do have rules that when you're talking about agenda items and you've spoken about a topic, you speak one time. So you do have the right to enforce your rules. But as you said, it is a balance. And we always err on the side of providing citizens the ability to speak and the ability to run your meeting. And I agree with you, Mayor, that is a balancing act, and that's, and that's difficult, given the speaker a lot of times. And, uh, this council has always provided speakers with the ability to speak, uh, and been patient, and I commend you on that. But you're right, there is, there are rules, and we have the right to enforce rules of decorum. But speakers do have the right to speak on any proposition before you.
I pointed out to you, uh, City Attorney, it's not something I wanted to see, but, um, I saw on the floor today a recent Supreme Court ruling, I believe it was the School Board in, um, Georgia, and they removed somebody for being rude and calling people names and this and that. And, um, as I recall the article, uh, the Supreme Court basically said that was within their First Amendment rights. And so we're very limited up here, and if I can do anything as far as stopping the clock and trying to get anyone back, so what I'm trying to get at is knowing that our, um, we have First Amendment issues that make it very difficult. Well, I was talking about insurance, and, um, because I do, I, whether it's him or anybody else, make it very clear, him or anybody else. I would like that when you sign up to talk about a topic, you talk about that topic. But it just seems as though if you just touch on it, and that has to do with insurance, or that has to, and now the other thing that certain people like to do is anything to do with money or budget or anything else, it, it's all good. And, and I have spoken specifically. Um, and I can tell you, and I think that they would agree, that it's gotten, I was very frustrated in our discussions with the fact that in the way I analyzed it was, or use an analogy for, was it's like coming into a classroom where you have a, um, student or students who the previous teacher, you know, not talking about anybody else, when I'm just saying that, you know, have a hard time with, but I'm not allowed to do anything, fix it. And that's very frustrating for me. Um, I do feel like, um, you know, I, I try to get in there and say the things that, you know, well, I, I can tolerate a lot of things. I just get a hard time tonight. Obviously, City Manager, you were up to bat, um, over and over and over, and so that part was, if he went back to City Manager again, I was gonna, we were gonna be done. And, uh, I don't know, and I know City Attorney gets very nervous every time I do that. That's the truth. I mean, if we're gonna be just wide open, because then, well, we sit in our meetings after this, there's that whole discussion about what I just did. So that being said.
Let me ask this.
Go ahead.
Richard?
Yep.
Oh, sorry. If we were to turn around and further restrict the time on the consent agenda. Because if somebody is speaking relevantly about any of the consent agenda items, I don't mind talk, listening to them for ten minutes.
And we can extend time.
We can extend the time. Um, my problem is when people start talking about the things that aren't really relevant to the consent agenda. So that would stop some of that, not all of it.
You have a right to ask them to be relevant to the agenda items. Correct, we're here to do business.
But when I do that, and truthfully, in our post-game discussions, well, if he's talking about insurance just enough that we gotta be careful what might happen in a lawsuit. I'm not trying to be negative here, but I'm saying that if it was my show, the way I run my show, we'd be, we'd be done in a minute and a half. But that's not how I get to run it, so let's make it real clear. I would love to be able to say, done, and I've done it several times. And I also say, if we're gonna talk about tiny houses, because that was one of the times, you signed up to talk about tiny houses, and you didn't. This, this consent agenda thing is very hard, because there's so many, I mean, he had seven topics. So if he just touches on one of them a little bit here and a little bit there, we have concerns from the legal side that we violated his First Amendment right, because he said something about insurance. So he says one word about one topic of seven. I think the thing to do simply is, we have never had anybody stand up there, you know, other than, than the citizen we're speaking of, and need more than three minutes. And if they did, we could give them more. But I, I, I just don't think it's, I don't think that shortening the time hurts anybody, because we'd give them more time if they were talking pertinent. Ten minutes is quite the cave. Yes, ma'am, Miss, uh, Miss Stokel. Member Stokel?
So, um, I, several of you, I think we got elected around the same time. I will say, it is definitely a lot better than when I first started. So I think we've moved in the right direction. I'm definitely open to shortening it to that. Um, as far as petitions and requests, that is where I, I mean, they can sit here and call us all names.
Yeah.
I feel like that, I'm perfectly okay with three minutes of whatever. It's the other aspects that we've touched on that I'm really not okay, because I do feel like it's, it's, it's not helping us to be able to do good governance, in my opinion. I think it impacts our meetings. I feel like it prolongs our meetings, um, by sometimes we just don't want to even do our reports, because we know that we've just gone through a lot. I mean, I think it inhibits us from being able to effectively govern well. I, what I would like to see is potentially us give, um, the City Attorney potentially the, I, put, fun, yeah, funding to hire outside counsel that might be like specialized in this area. I feel like if we're dealing with this, other local governments might have.
You, you have.
Can I interject? We did that.
And paid for outside counsel on it already?
We actually, just so you know, I've pushed this button hard enough and worked hard, seriously. We actually had a, uh, teleconference with half the staff and myself, and an outside attorney who specializes in this. And I walked out with my head down, because I didn't get any support, and I said all the things I'm saying now about if I'm in education and you're doing this in classroom, you have classroom management. It's hard to have management when you have no control.
Right.
So, but again, she came back with the, you know, the First Amendment, they have a right. You have to be careful. You have to do this. I think the only real answer is to shorten the time we have to deal with it, because outside of that, um, I have interjected, and, and I, I appreciate that, because I, I do think it's better, and I think that there is a a relationship. After, we watch this, maybe not, but, uh, but, um, you know, a- again, the thing that was bothering me the most tonight was that he just decided, you know, City Manager, we all know, it, it, it is what it is, and it's gonna always be, but enough of is enough, you know? If nothing else, we can play that. You've already said that.
Well, let me.
And I don't mind anybody else on council jumping up and saying something, and, and we've, we've already been over this. I mean, like I said earlier, I've heard more about the, uh, fountains than I ever want to hear again, or than I've ever heard since the last meeting. So that being said, it's just something to think about. It's not, believe me, it's not as easy as just saying, okay, you're out of line, sit down. Uh, you're, you're, now, I will say this, when we speak of ordinances, and he or anybody else stands up for an ordinance, I'm good. You're, you signed up to talk about this, talk about this. It gets very difficult when you've got fourteen items that he can talk about any time he wants, and just say one word about one of them, and, and I'm trying to figure out where he's at. It's hard to control that.
Well, I would support the three minutes, and if the individual is talking about consent agenda items, I would be in favor of extending time. If they are not talking about consent agenda items, I would probably not vote to extend time. That's where I'm at, so I'm okay with that.
I would like City Attorney to look into that, because that's how this starts, I guess. Um, I, I, it's always a big deal when you shorten this or shorten that. I was concerned about ten minutes when I started, or when we started it. But now that we've seen that it's like herding cats, because there's fourteen items that, you know, I signed up for eight of them. None of us can keep up with where, you know, where he's at. I approve this, I approve this, I do, blah, 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 and we're all over the place. And then what I'm just trying to hear a word that might keep me from being able to do something, it's very hard in consent agenda to get, say that you're not on topic, because there's a hundred and fifty-two topics. So, uh, you know, I don't know how anybody wants, wants to talk about that or look into that, but I'd at least like to start the possible process. It's just impossible for ten minutes of anybody to figure out where they're at if they're not calling. It would almost, unless you just want to require, I'm gonna, I'm talking, I'm talking about these seven, I'm gonna do it in order. And, uh, because then I can at least say, you're not talking about that, go to the next one. But right now, I've, it's just all over the place, and there's no real rules about when, what, or how he talks about. Just, I've signed up for A, B, C, L, G, Z, W.
And it starts off good. Like, I approve this, and then right after the first thirty seconds, it's nowhere near topic.
Well, that's because once he says approve, 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 he's talked about all of them, and he's got nine and a half minutes left to talk about.
Correct. That's exactly what's happening right now.
Hey, hey, can you tell, can you tell he's the rookie? Just wait about four years from now, five years, man, enough is enough.
I shut off.
So. You shut off? Mr. Mayor.
Let me, let me, I'm sorry.
Let, let me say this before you. If you remember, I was the one that suggested that we try to compress this thing, and we ended up with ten, but we've gotta go through a, a, a long process, because we gotta get approval, or we gotta listen to, um, the public as far as if we change our, our rules. We can change our rules. Um, but you gotta listen to those who say we, we disagree with it. Um, I, I guess my challenge is, if it wasn't for this particular person, we wouldn't be having this problem or this discussion, right?
Absolutely.
Uh, unfortunately, he's really smart when it comes down to manipulating the process.
Say one word about insurance.
Right, and, and that's what really bothers me, because I would not have, I, I wanna hear the public when they have an opinion about something we're gonna have to vote on, because it, it, it affects. But this particular person, so the question we have to ask ourselves is, how far can we go? I have no, no fear of saying, okay, you're off, uh, topic. Give him a chance to get back on topic. If he doesn't, say you're done with that. But I think we also can do, um, and, and Attorney can tell us right or wrong, but I think we can also say, once you have said that you want to be on A, C, and D, when you're finished with A, you don't get to go back to A, say, okay, let's go to the next one. He doesn't need three minutes for each one of them, because right now, we have given him the luxury. He can be on A for three seconds, and then he'll, uh, be on C for nine minutes if, if he wants to. And I, I just think, and, and the challenge that I have is, he's speaking to us, but if we're all gonna be honest, we're not listening. So what process that we're trying to get through? And the only constructive process is trying to get through ten minutes.
Yeah, that's true.
And that's just unfortunate, because we have people in the audience who really don't want to hear this stuff either, and you can see them rolling their eyes and everything, because they know he's gonna get up there and speak nonsense for ten minutes, and, and that's just not right.
Well, and obviously, I, I agree, and I think if you went back to, uh, Walt, he certainly would agree. But, um, this whole ten-minute thing of twenty-two possible topics, it sounds good to say we're gonna go in order. Well, you're dealing with a student that doesn't go in order, and they're all over the place, and then if, you know, he can say, his lawyer can say, well, he was talking about this topic, he was on topic. He just wasn't on the topic you wanted him to be on.
Right.
That's why the consent agenda one is harder to control than anything else. It's like, it is. It's like herding cats. We've got, you know, at, at least nine, but sometimes fourteen different topics. And he's chosen eight of them, and there's really no requirement to go in order. I've tried to get in order, but, you know, I did this, approve, 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 then he starts talking about this, and kinda hung on to the insurance enough today where, uh, you know, it makes it tough. So I, I, I think everybody knows how I'd like to see it run. That's the only way I know how to do it. But, uh, in this case, if we're going to, and I agree with you, it's very difficult, and the perception could be we're cutting out, as a matter of fact, we got some emails about that last time when we cut it down. That person's not sitting here watching. Nobody want to talk for ten minutes except one person, and it's hard as heck to keep that person on topic. So, I, yeah, I guess right now, all I'm asking is, City Attorney, look into it. We can talk about it and, and go from there.
Right, your dress, Member Stokel, yes. Uh, we have retained an attorney. You guys authorized me to do that. They're analyzing not just this topic, but a lot of our processes and procedures, whether it comes down to the cards, and, and I've spoke to her about a week ago, and they're putting a report together. So we will be coming back to council.
Okay, perfect. That's what I thought. I was like, I don't remember getting anything yet, so.
You haven't, but you will. We'll, we'll have a discussion.
Good.
I was frustrated enough, I think that was, and I know that they talked to me about that, but I'm like, I said the same thing you did. Can we not get somebody else that can look at this and say what we can do? So I think we probably all talked enough about this, but I'll let Member Robinson speak.
And, and all, and all I'd say, knowing a little bit about behavior, if you, you guys give him more control, uh, than, than he deserves.
First Amendment gives him more control than he deserves, because if I was running the show.
Well, no, I'm not talking about that, Mr., uh, Mr. Mayor. I'm talking about, uh, we know the standards, we know the, what he's doing, and we sit here for, for the last twenty minutes, the, uh, deliberating on something that we've been deliberating for twenty minutes after every meeting. So he's, he's ahead, and that's all I said. Okay, you know, uh, you have, and I know that, working with the, the, uh, City Attorney, he's, he's done his best. You just said that. So, you know, when he gets up there and said, okay, you know, give me, uh, give me what you got, put the time on, let him go, and say bye.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. And the reason I do, and one of the reasons I probably keep bringing it up, is I want anybody who's watching me coach know that I'm doing my job. I want anybody who's watching me run a classroom that I'm doing my job. And I want everybody to know that me running a meeting, I'm doing my job. But I also need people to know, and you guys are the ones I'm most concerned about, especially if he starts talking about you, which he does intermittently, depending on who it is, or what the week is, except Member Robinson, because except Member Robinson. But anyway, that being said, and I'm just kidding with you, but that being said, as long as, as you guys see that I'm trying to do what I need to do, and if I had more power, I'd be a lot better. But that being said, I, I appreciate those words, and, uh, and City Attorney, I do appreciate you, because every time I speak, I'm sure you're saying he's mad at me again. Um, that's, I, I got to sit in the meeting with the special attorney, and I got the same thing you did, and we are very limited on what we can do to stop it. Um, I will continue to try to stop it when he decides to focus on one person, and this particular meeting, we had one person, and the next time, and I don't know, and we'll talk more about that later, City Man, uh, City Attorney, but when he starts focusing on one person, and it becomes kinda hateful, I hope that I can say, you're done. That this, and I know, I know you'll probably say you can't do that. But anyway, uh, I don't think anybody else wants to talk anymore. They're tired of hearing me. City, uh, Manager?
Yes, sir. Just, uh, one informational item. Uh, tomorrow, um, which is September fifteenth at five-thirty, will be your final budget hearing. Um, we have distributed the slides, and I also sent you a read-ahead, um, for your tree ordinance, which will be heard at your next meeting. So give you
Don't even look at me.
A, a little bit of time to digest that.
I was done. I was done. I'll leave that one alone.
Yeah, you leave that alone. Did I read something on that today?
Yes, sir. I, I sent it out, uh, late afternoon.
Yeah, I thought I read something on that today.
Yes, sir.
Anything else, City Manager?
No, sir. Thank you very much.
And, and he probably said that already, but tomorrow morning at eleven-thirty is Fire Chief, uh, Woodward's, uh, reception. And then, of course, tomorrow. Woodward's reception, and then, of course, tomorrow, our, hopefully, one-hour meeting. City attorney?